All right, well, it'd be six o'clock, I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District for Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. And attendance, we have myself, Trusty Manowski, Trusty Dunn, and Trusty Mack, Chief, uh, Captain Seber, Carl Solomon, Treasurer, and Attorney, you reminded everybody?
Lamb.
Lamb. Attorney. And if you all please rise for the audience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bruce, Dan, do you guys take a look at the minutes?
I did.
I did everything I could to make it.
The problem with that.
Uh, the only thing I would like to change is in the title is it says minutes of regular meeting is actually a special.
It's actually a special meeting, you are correct.
So that's the only.
I'll have John correct those on our end then, and we'll recirculate.
Perfect, that's the only correction I had.
Yeah, I mean, he can just resend that as final, and we'll reprove it.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and.
We haven't proved it yet.
Yeah, but you guys can improve this, that sounds good.
Um, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, I'll say as amended.
I'll second that.
I'll give it to me. And all those in favor, Sarah?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Chief's report.
I'll go first. So I, we, uh, or actually, I delivered a monthly to all of you, I think except you. I didn't have your email.
Oh, no worries.
So, uh, I can.
Uh, it's what, trustees?
It was on the last email they sent out, so.
Okay. So I think if you, if you guys instead of sending each other, send us trust keys at Norwood Fire.
Oh, okay. Send that maybe, send that out.
Okay. I'll, I'll make it.
So in the front is just the total for the month and the total for the year, uh, we have six total calls, I think five and six were EMS. And then in the back, there are tenants. Uh, there was one abnormal time there of a ten minute response, uh, that was a combination of crews being in Station One's district on a training. We try to keep a, a crew at Station Three at all times, but go figure, as soon as they left Station Three, it was one of those trains that all three stations had to be there just for about twenty minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And we got a call, so, um, that's for the, the, fortunately, there was a B L S call, so it was really a good deal. But, uh, we try not to play like being the Russian in that all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes it's unavoidable.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, uh, as far as, uh, department reports, um, I already mentioned, had a phone from Norwood Neighbors, uh, called, and, uh, this inquiry about the Santa Gray, and, um, reached out to Pete, and the ball's rolling, and hopefully next week or two, we'll find out more specifics on it, when it's gonna be scheduled, and then we can relay that message to the board as well as how the associate blasted out to, uh, the Norwood Neighbors.
Thanks, yeah, appreciate that.
Okay.
We, we ended up laying out to be single-ish.
I think Carl decided to be single.
I'm, I'm, I'm the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we could get a bridge cast, or this possibly.
Oh, and the tradition.
I should.
Yeah.
Yeah, but thanks for that.
Sure. Uh, twenty twenty four for us is, uh, projected to be another record here, or projected to run about fifty-five rail calls, uh, so we're getting busy here, but, uh, managing. So it's nice to partnership or partner with like Megforce and, uh, the Grand Stroud, which we like, and we've been with all of our neighbors, so we're all on each other, so. Um, engine four sixty-three is gonna be replaced in December with a new, uh, engine, uh, at Station Three, uh, it's gonna be a sister engine to the two other engines that we've had, or off-lead or in-pierce, we're gonna set up the same way. Um, the nice thing about, uh, uh, this purchase is that the district, the Little Five Protection District partner will be privileged to purchase execution equipment, not only four of the engine, but we got a couple tools for our tenderer at Station Three, as well as, uh, a matter of time or so, all of our response, uh, non-transport vehicles have some sort of execution, so we're very excited about that. Um, and then, last but not least, Pete, this is Pete's last meeting. He's walkout, he's on January third, um, so it's, uh, um, a great experience if, if you are, um, available on January third or times, huh?
On P M.
I suggest, I guess, it's a lot of fun, it's just, uh, just to feel good, want my table kind of close together. All crews, uh, together, also, so deep congratulations, uh, for, for helping, uh, uh, before the work of landing, uh, so great conditions, happy for. Looks like I'm.
Yeah, last meeting for me, uh, I'll get Andy Rick to be my replacement, who was going on, uh, City Council, we named him, see, on the second of December, so he'll be starting on, uh, January fourth. And so we're in on January sixth, as one said, you guys are able to welcome the public down to the public safety building if you want, and, uh, tight head briefing, uh, five to ten at night. Wanna have a beer if you want, um, but, yeah, it's been six years since we started, it's a little over six years, so, uh, some of us have been here since the start.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, yeah, I'm really proud of the way this has turned out, um, and always contentious, beginning, we said this before, but, uh, I think the plan came together and.
And.
Provide a great service, uh, I'll put the example of, uh, we had on the sixteenth of November, a fire on two fifteen Waukegan Road, which is the old colonial buil- building. Fire alarm worked, got us coming, Libertyville was in quarters at Station Three, and there, the tenant heard the radio going over, starting slowly going before it was even toned, got there first. Neighbor in the tattoo shop got up there with his fire extinguisher, knocked it down, our guys got in there and put the rest out pretty much in the pumpkin, but rescued a couple dolla- dolla on the neighboring apartment, but, uh, yeah, so good seeing that work together, I was actually on the scene with that one man, our battalion chief, and just good to see everybody working together and handling the, the crews we had on scene, so hopefully they get out of it, and they work away. Fire protection bureau, fire and fire office, and doing these inspections and that, so good, good to see that work. Um, and then for the whole month, we had seventeen calls, one of those being on fire, and then fifteen ambulance calls, over two hundred calls for the year, and, you know, the next month, we'll probably do two, two twenty, something like that. Also, you guys from the house sixty-seventies, so, you know, we're still under three hundred calls a year for this area. Um, and the service, I think we've shown we're behind the good service and, uh, you know, the crews work together well, so just keep, just seeing more of that happen, and, uh, thank you guys for all the cooperation over the years.
And I hope you've achieved everything you've done.
Yep. Thank you, Chief, congrats, Steve, great team.
One thing I wanna add is, uh, probably summer of next year, we'll make a special kind of dispatch, we're gonna have school air forces on as well, so, uh, the problem with current dispatch is, is not really a problem, I just, I just have time, but there's always gonna be a delay in transfer from all dispatches, and then the rest. There is, that delay is gonna be enormous, now, because we're sharing the dispatch, we're gonna be on different channels most likely, but, uh, uh, those, uh, those calls can be dispatched to this neighborhood. So, uh, if we have, like force, and like force, that helps us, that, um, all transfer delay is not gonna be existent, you know, so, and all this is, 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 is.
So kind of with the way we thought it was gonna be, uh, wait for Sarah to talk about it.
Uh, yes.
Right on.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Dan Bruce, anything for Chief?
No, other than again, I wanna thank you, Chief. Uh, I know, and we worked off it on when I was over at the base, it's always been hilarious, always been hilarious. Um, I've always wanted you to be first and foremost, uh, part of this, and then the rest just kind of comes later, so we should have.
Uh, General five, public comment. The district trustees allocate time for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fires and trustees in any manner, not just on the agenda. Each person addressing the trustees has asked to look at their comments, so next one, five minutes. Any public comment? And Attorney's report to the board of trustees.
Uh, John did not send me with any information, so the only thing I'll mention is there was a lot of chatter about pension reform during the veto session, but nothing substantive happened. We, they downstate know something needs to happen, but there's no appetite to change things quickly, so we'll see if anything happens during lame duck in January, but I personally don't think so. Uh, and it is levy season, but you guys have the levy on the agenda this day, so you're in good shape.
All right, then, thank you.
Yep.
And Carl, Treasurer's report.
Okay, so for the balance sheet, as of the end of November, um, the checking account has eight hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Reserve account, three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents, and petty cash, it is eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. For a total assets of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and five cents.
How many cents was that, you answered?
That was oh five.
I'm serious, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, oh five.
Uh, because, so, this is not my good error, and when, you have papers, I didn't grab them.
You want it?
No, I'm, I'm gonna sign it with them anyway. But I mark my notes.
And, um, as far as the, uh, budget, you know, the P and R budget, this is actual, we're seven months in, so fifteen percent, um, we have received, um, you know, both sets of the, uh, property tax payments, so in total, we're about ninety-six percent of our revenue, we'll still get a little bit more from the, uh, from the state, um, as the year progresses. Uh, we've paid three of the four quarterly, um, I G As, so seventy-five percent there, I've got the, the, the final one, um, just came in, so that'll be paid next month. Other than that, you know, the building operations, building maintenance utilities are, you know, um, running at twenty-four percent of what we budgeted, we always, you know, budgeted the highest in case on that. And also on the, uh, administration, you know, legal, um, we're at about twenty-five percent, office expense, four percent, because there's really not much there. So in total, on the administrative side, sixteen percent, um, and then, uh, the liability insurance is paid at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that's, we'll be at a hundred percent, so that's where we are at on the budget, pretty much where we would expect to be.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report as presented. I'll second that. And roll call vote, Trusty Mack.
Aye.
Trusty Dunn.
Aye.
Trusty Manowski.
Aye.
And outstanding invoices, Carl?
Very short month, um, just four of them, uh, the ComEd at three hundred and forty-eight dollars, uh, Lake County Public Works to Water, twenty-eight dollars. Um, I was in Ritz for the, uh, legal container, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and more short gas for forty-seven dollars, correct, total expenditures this month, or the month of November, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the outstanding invoices as presented.
I'll second.
And roll call vote, Trusty Dunn.
Aye.
Trusty Mack.
Aye.
Trusty Manowski.
All right, and Carl?
Okay, so.
Levy.
We're gonna do the levy, um, I've put together two, um, variations on the levy ordinance for the board's consideration. The first would be what we typically do every year, which is keeping in line with the truth of taxation, we take last year's extension, multiply it by four point nine nine, or one point oh four nine nine, if you will. Um, and that's, uh, the maximum that we can levy without having a public hearing, and of course, even if you did, the tax cap would hit you anyway, so, you know, it is what it is. And that's what we've done for the last two or three years. Um, I also put together another, um, version of it, where I kept the levy exactly the same as last year, rather than raising it four point nine nine percent or five percent, I raised it not at all. And the reason for that is, um, we have been accumulating cash, um, we, 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 like, three, three and a half years ago, we lowered the levy because the building mortgage was paid off. We did that. Then in addition, um, as, you know, I would say as a Treasurer, somewhere down the road, the board would probably really want to readjust the levy, probably drop it a fair bit. But I would not recommend doing that until the building is disposed of, because you just never know, this building sitting here, that we may really need some resources to, to, to deal with something really bad that happens, or whatever. So, but at the same time, I think it's, it would be fiscally responsible to drop it, or just to not raise it, so if, what that would amount to is thirty-three thousand dollars in revenue that we would not get, that's the difference between, between that. If you look at our last three years, our budget surplus, the amount of revenue that we got over the expenses each year was right around a hundred thousand dollars, so we've added a hundred thousand dollars reserves for the last three years. So it seems, you know, some people might say that, that we should probably do more, but again, I'm trying to be very cautious here. But by collecting, basically, so like next year's, um, uh, budget surplus would probably be more like sixty-five thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. It's just a one-time thing, so the next year, we can, we can levy again, you know, with the five percent that we were, or we can continue to do that, just to try to.
Really, really balance it up.
Keep it balanced, but yet it's the same time, show that we're, you know, we're not taking money from our taxpayers, that we really don't need, we wanna be sure we have appropriate reserves, our reserves are quite adequate. But we're having three years of, of solid budget surpluses, we, we probably are taking a little bit too much revenue, so let's kind of slowly trim it. And I said, again, I think we ought to really take a real hard look at, I do a, do a workshop after the building is gone, and we are.
Yeah.
We have a location, or we, and we know everything, because at that point, we will have a very straightforward budget, and very predictable. Right now, we do still, we don't have equipment which does help with the unpredictability that we have this building.
Yep, which is the well, period.
So that's why I wanted to present those two options of, of kind of just doing the momentum and adding another, you know, upping it another thirty, thirty thousand dollars, or just say, let's keep it the same as last year. So I'll leave that for the, for the board to decide. Basically, that you'd be, the, you know, just real quickly for the, for the record, and the numbers, the, um, if we were to raise it, the corporate fund levy would be four hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars, the ambulance fund would be two hundred and eighty-five thousand and one dollar, and the torque fund would be four thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, for a total levy of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents. The keeping it level would be, the corporate would be three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ambulance fund would be two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, four thousand dollars for the torque fund, for a total levy of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
Hi, I'm so sorry, Carl, would you please repeat the torque fund on the second one for me?
The torque fund on keeping it level would be four thousand dollars each.
Thank you so much.
So it's worth pointing out, especially for anybody that happens to watch this online, that two different things, operating surplus versus reserve. Our reserves have always been pretty much spot on, fairly conservative, building roof collapses, something like that, so. If we were to go with not raising, we don't impact that in any way, shape, or form, we're still in a position, in case of a catastrophic incident, to be able to fund that, please stop me if I'm wrong. Um, but we have been operating at a slight surplus for this last year, and so presuming that everything, we've still got that reserve in place, I don't, I, I, I do not consider not raising the levy, in my opinion, to be any substantive risk.
Let me get, just to, to reiterate, we're still talking about, uh, a projected budget surplus, um.
So they're over around sixty, about six four thousand, four thousand?
Actually, um, yeah, 'cause it would be, it would be ninety-seven thousand if we took it, so, yeah, it's about sixty-five thousand dollars. Instead, instead of a hundred thousand, it'll be sixty-five thousand, so we'd be adding another sixty-five thousand dollars to the surplus.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you'd still be running a surplus for the year, you'd still be increasing your reserve, you're still.
My point, exactly, yeah, yes.
It's not like.
Or just, you know, just wanna trim it a little bit, and then, yeah, like I said, and, and we'll probably have the same discussion next year, say, you know, we can keep it level again. You know, and our, our, our reserves will still be, be growing, but a lo- at a lesser rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't need to keep growing reserves.
No, it doesn't need to.
Yep, sir, please give me, or, I know in the past, Bruce, I think you and I, and maybe with the board, we talked about maybe coming, coming up with a capital improvement plan for Norwood. I know we're not talking about a lot of money, when we think capital, sometimes it could be twenty-five thousand or more, sometimes it could be five thousand or more. The Libertyville Fire Protection District, the capital is five thousand or more, right, which isn't very much money. However, the cost of business is getting very expensive for all departments around here. If you wanna consider something like that, we could put something together, and it could be as easy as just, uh, um, giving both departments a little bit of money, money to help with EMS funds, uh, EMS equipment is always going up, everything is going up. Um, it's just something to consider, um, you know. I, I completely understand, Carl, what you're saying, you know, you don't want, you wanna be fiscally responsible and everything, but if the board chooses to keep that levy going, that money could definitely be used to fund a C I P.
Yeah, and, and the, the, the nice thing about, you know, that, the proposal, state flat, this does not in any way impact our ability to do that, because we would still be looking at a sixty-five thousand dollar surplus for the year. So we would be more than capable of doing that if the board decided that was where we wanted to go, so.
And then for capital improvement, those that have been done during, um, are they, are they setting our budget, or not?
It will, it will depend a lot on, on how much money you want, as long as, you know, as long as we easily afford it.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we can't.
Does it have to be an explicit line item, or could it be like a sub-line on, um, our budget tracking?
We would need, need to do it in the next year's budget.
Okay.
You'd also have to go through council as well to make sure, if you have a purchasing policy, um, how many quotes do you need, what's the dollar amount, all this stuff.
Yeah.
And it could be adopted in, in time.
Yeah, 'cause we didn't talk about that a little bit, um, we should, we should.
No, we did, yeah, the, the trick that we have is, is really people, and, and I would throw this out. Okay, Pete, so you're gonna, where are you gonna be, Carol, in the Carolinas or Tennessee? Yeah, so think about it while you're down with the war. But, but the reality is, to make, to make this work, we need to be able to address both departments, which I can't do one versus the other. The other one is, we really need to, in the Venn diagram, show a correlation and direct benefit to the Norwood Fire Protection, or, pardon, Rockland Fire Protection District. If we can do those two things, I think we can thread this needle. The challenge we were running into during the decennial committee meetings was, how did we, how did we thread that needle? And within the time constraint we had, there weren't a lot of easy wins on that. But I, I would be happy to put that on the agenda, 'cause I, for, well, we'll get to that in a minute, I'd be happy to put that on an agenda so we can have a full and, and robust discussion about that. I just don't, I, I'm not the guy with the good ideas, and I, and it's gonna require coordination between both departments, and a little bit of discussion, and I, you know, if the board so chooses, I could work with the Chiefs on this, just to create that nexus, 'cause we really do have to be able to show the nexus to this particular district. I think we can, we talked about that, but we need to think about that a little bit, so we can kind of put it in the right line, show what that is. Um, but that said, and I did have this, I think at the time we had this discussion, is none of them jumped out as being something that were gonna be at least initially particularly expensive. So when I was asking about the, the budget surplus, I was kind of assured I was overthinking it.
Yeah, that's all right.
Well, you also have to, as long as you have this building, you have to think of C I P for this building, right? The heaters in the base can go at any time, you don't have to afford, those are expensive, right? The heat, the, any, anything in this building, as long as you have it, you're gonna have to project at least have some reserves in there to, to replace, even if it gets sold next year, right? It's unfortunate, because it's a waste, but you still have to take, maintain the building until that happens, right?
Agreed, yeah, I agree, just having generator expenses and, you know, a bit of cost for dealing with that, but it's all squared away.
Well, you got with some money in the heat, and like, you know, in the roofing of last year's, luckily it's not been massive, but, uh.
Yes, it's, it's the roof that scares the heck out of me, but, you know.
We could always, I can, I can work with Andy, Rick, to put a C I P together, just a draft, it wouldn't be, it'd be maybe three years out, and, uh, we can present it, maybe in the next couple months, and you guys can do whatever you want.
I like it.
That's good to do.
Okay.
I mean, that's not an agenda item, so what I'll do is, you guys start working on it, or make it an agenda item, we can properly adopt it.
Yeah, once you have time to review it, if you wanna tweak it a little bit, we could do that.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be an agenda item to formally approve or, or whatever.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, Bruce, I'll just use you as a.
Yeah.
If you guys are.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I'm going back to the levy, uh, I, I agree with the comments, I mean, even if we can pursue a C I P, I don't think reducing, or, I'll say reducing, I don't think keeping the levy the same and not pursuing an increase is really gonna drastically affect, um, what we can do, uh, going forward, whether it be with the C I P, or affect any potential maintenance or improvements to the building. Um, so I'd make a motion to approve the levy, um, with keeping, make a motion to approve, uh, same levy as, as last year, I don't know exactly how you wanna phrase that.
So maybe approve the levy in the aggregate amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
Yes, that's my motion.
I agree, that's the second.
I'll second that.
All right, so the second, uh, roll call vote, Trusty Dunn.
Aye.
Trusty Mack.
Aye.
Trusty Manowski.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Bruce, in this one's you, uh, twenty twenty-five being scheduled.
All right, uh, I think everybody has a draft schedule, this year, we had to reschedule two meetings. I do not see that changing next year, I think Tulsa's the same time, so we know you're gonna be gone.
Yep.
Uh, I think I'm gonna be gone at the same time as well, in, uh, November, instead of making that Thursday, and this is where I ask Chief, 'cause I know you have to go to other meetings, I simply move these from the second Monday to the first Monday, uh, of the month.
When I first came on the board, these were all the first Monday of the month, and one of the first things I had to do was have to change it to the second, because, you know, the first, I can't do Treasurer's report, I can't reconcile the bank accounts, 'cause I don't have the bank statements.
Okay.
So that's why we don't do the first, you know, particularly, with the, the, um, October sixth is probably okay, but the, uh, November third, there just, there's not enough time to, um, you know, I won't have bank statements, so I can't really do that.
Could, could we then just do two, the two reports like that in December, if we kept it?
You certainly, you certainly can, you know.
I don't wanna, I definitely don't wanna create any more work for you, if this is really.
Oh, no, it doesn't create any more work, I mean, I, you know, I, I, if I do the report, when I give bank statements, and, and I don't present it until the next month, I have, that's no problem for me, and that's all.
Yeah, so I, I was aware of that, um, the reason I went with that is, like, I know there's a conflict on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
It's like, not for me, not anymore.
So, are you talking? Are you talking just those two meetings?
Just the two.
Just those two.
We can make anything work, really.
Okay, because realistically, we wanna have those October, November meetings, because we have all, uh.
Well, we should have them.
Yeah, we have to have those meetings, the Treasurer's report, while important, of course, to say so, more important than we take care of all the levies, stuff that you have to the levy ordinance, and all the rest of it. Uh, I'm not married to Monday, I kept it Monday because I didn't wanna make it.
Or the third Monday, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, trying to stay away from it.
First on the. Third Monday doesn't work for November, though.
Oh, yeah, just, I'm just trying to stay away from the, you know, first few days of the month, that's all.
Well, I've got a calendar right here, I am happy to entertain anything anyone wants to do.
I'm, 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 that's presented. You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct with the, the November date, that one, that will be out.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I'm, I am the.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I'm, I am the conflict that October, and then you're the November.
I'll see, you guys make it for what works for the board, and we, we can always send alternate people, so.
Well, the other thing is, just throwing it out there, I mean, if only one of us has a conflict on the regular scheduled day, we can still have a meeting, because we'd have a quarrel. We did it this year because we were missing a trustee.
True, but these are leading up into.
The levies.
And the levies.
Yeah, that's a, this is definitely a board decision, but when we're doing meetings where we're discussing levy and stuff, I, I get nervous about knowing one trustee's not going to be available, because emergencies happen and then a second could.
Yeah, so, all right, let's take a step back, and instead of, for October sixth and November three, if we made it October nine.
The sixth is fine, I, I, I can do that.
Okay, so, well, if we're going to do it, I want to keep it consistent.
Catch it, so.
I'm, I'm lucky, I remember what I have to practice, much less what they will be creating. So if we're going to do that, I would suggest, um, Wednesday, Thursday, any, any, either working events that.
If there is, then I'll get somebody else, I'll, I'll get out here.
Either Wednesday, Thursday, or whatever.
Obviously, um, in October, Wednesday, Thursday's fine. In November, uh, I could not do Thursday, the sixth, but that's when I'd be rolling in Tulsa, so, you know. And then, then, I mean, honestly, Wednesday, Thursday, the week prior to the regular scheduled meeting of the ten, I could, you know, I mean, outside of that, that Monday would be all right. Because, you know, we didn't have enough time to still.
So the scheduled meeting is for the, it's really eleven, ten week, we do like, instead of being Monday that week, we do like Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday that week.
That would be okay. So Wednesday, Thursday, after the regulars, after the second Monday, would be fine, so, call thirteen in November, that's what you're talking about for.
That's what I was, October.
Are you off that whole week in October? I, I, that, that, we did a seven.
Okay, all right, so then let us, I think it's just, since I've got one of the small lines, and my mind is getting smaller, so. So let's make it, then,
You know, the Thursday before.
Thursday the ninth and October, and Thursday, you can't make the sixth, but you can make, you know, correct. So we can, why don't we make it the thirteenth, we're not the same, at least they're both Thursdays.
Yeah.
So make it the ninth, and the thirteenth.
Ten, nine, eleven, thirteen.
I said ten, nine, twenty-five, eleven, thirteen, twenty-nine. We're making same time, same day, June. And then I, you literally just decided to give everybody a day off in January.
I was going to ask you both the reason, we do not need a January meeting. I've been in the past, could skip to January meetings, so.
Well, and if I recall correctly, the only reason we had the January meeting twenty-four was because the secretary, the dirty dog, did not have the calendar figured out yet. We needed to get that worked out, so having, having put that into the lit. Why? I know, and you're going to be sitting there going, I want to drive back, just because I want to hang around with those guys.
I'm, I'm serious, I'm thinking if you give them a bit of a buy more fee.
I'd go to other paper districts that meet more.
Yeah, I, I would say, I have people that go that more too, but I need just.
Maybe it's, it's been discussed.
I think about four months for sure, we absolutely don't, I mean, where there's no.
There's certain things in business.
But, but, you keep, so you've got some great activities around the meeting, but.
You've got the budget. You've got the, uh, the annual reports, those are the ones that, you know, from my perspective, we have to have, that's the five or six.
And that's one of my other paper districts, they meet April, July, October, December. And this way, they hit that budget in October, and then they'll meet this Thursday in December for their levy.
Oh, I told you the annual reports was, we do the, the budget is, um.
Do you guys do yours earlier?
Yeah, we do it, June, 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 we try to get it kind of June, but July we do it.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is, this is one of our longest running meetings ever. So, I mean, for what it's worth, I'm inclined to, i- if we want to adjust fire as we go, I could do that. Um, I'd rather have them on the schedule and then cancel, than have them not cancel and then create special.
Oh, but the nice thing about that too is that it gives us a chance to talk to you guys, because some might come up during the month that, or we're the ones to hear about. So even if we, like I said, our meetings typically would be about twenty minutes.
The one thing that I constantly get asked about is calls, so I just, to be honest with you, I come here mostly to hear a lot of calls. I read the reports same as anybody else, but there's a whole bunch that isn't, and doesn't need to be. So getting that brief really helps me, and hoping for you guys.
It's pretty much, the story is ninety-five percent you get.
It's ninety-five, it's, it's only the five.
Five percent, false alarm, and he has, and, and something, fire. I'm really letting you know, like, yeah.
So, uh, do you want to make a motion, Bruce? Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule as presented, or as modified. With two changes, um, for October, we have the ninth, and November, we have the thirteenth. All, yeah, um, we'll go meeting in the month of January, and submit to review, and I'll, I'm going to put this under this, upgrade it back up in April, and see if there's any meetings we want to cut out, because I don't, I usually have meetings. But, uh, last year, we spent, I'll post it, the spring training, figure out what we're going to do in the decennial, but, yeah, that doesn't happen anymore, so.
So, motion by you, Bruce, right?
Correct.
I'll second. Uh, and we'll roll call vote, trustee Dunn.
Aye.
Trustee Mac.
Aye.
Trustee Mioski.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, agenda item eleven, other items that maybe law could brought before the board. We covered SANA, that's all I had. Do you have anything else?
We've already talked about, and I'll add it into my notes right now. Okay, hold the plan. And then I'll put in a reoccurring item to review our schedule. We should be here, when, when does the, when do they get back into session?
Uh, January, oh my gosh, I don't have the calendar in front of me, it's like a week in January, early January.
So it'll be. January, no, it'll be March, before we hear anything about capital improvement plan from Ida.
Okay.
So I'll keep an eye on that, too. Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll put those things on my ticker.
Thanks, Bruce.
Sounds good.
All right. With there being nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-nine P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.